Wednesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees. Let's please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Ritter, please note the role.
Noted.
Board members, in the absence of Supervisor Dunn, we'll need a motion to approve a chairperson for this evening's meeting in the absence of him.
I move to elect Joe Ferrari to run the Charter Township of Oxford Regular Board of Trustees Meeting for Wednesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Curtis, supported by Trustee Nichols, to approve Treasurer Ferrari as the chairperson for this evening's meeting, in the absence of Supervisor Dunn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Board members, in front of you, to approve of the agenda, a couple of quick changes. Eight, that should be transient merchants at the end, not vendors. And nine, C, should be memorandum of agreement, not understanding. Those are the only changes that were brought to my attention.
I'll move to approve the regular Board of Trustees Meeting for Oxford Township Wednesday, November fourteenth, with the aforementioned changes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Trustee Curtis, supported by Clerk Wright, to approve the amended agenda with the changes from transient vendors to transient merchants, memorandum of understanding to memorandum of agreement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Board members, our next item is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Curtis, supported by Trustee Dur, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Roll call, vote, please, Clerk Wright.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members. Item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. When you approach the microphone, please state your name for the record. Mr. Davis.
I just wanted to give you guys an update on some projects that we have going that you guys are aware of. The senior center and OCTV additions out at Seymour Lake Park. As of tonight, at five o'clock, all of our trusses are up. The sub roof is on, all the underlayment. We've got two-thirds of the windows in today. We're spraying the foam insulation next week, so once we get that done, we can get heat to it and really start cracking. I want to thank Jack Curtis and Bill Dunn for securing fifteen thousand yards of free fill for us for our parking lot. I know there were some upset people during the millage, but there's nothing we can do about. When they dropped the trusses, they dropped them in the middle of the parking lot. So it wasn't set up very conducively for an election poll site, but we tried to make the best of it. And then Jim Sharper and I worked closely today or last weekend. I submitted a paperwork to Oakland County Road Commission to have a driveway come off of Seymour Lake Road to the Cable Commission garage, opposing to have a driveway around the outside of the building that would take away green space that we can use for our senior center, as far as pachyball courts, horseshoe pits, and shuffleboard courts. So that's an update on that. Quick update on our bonds. Eighty percent of all of our projects have been completed. The skating rink was poured about a month and a half ago, but unfortunately, with the senior center and the Cable Commission coming to us, we had to push back the warming center and the pavilion. So I've talked to Chief Schultz already. We're going to try to do some alternative water this year, but we can't keep up to it like we would if we had a warming center with pipes that wouldn't freeze. So I would just ask that you're patient with us. So those two projects will be finished in 2019. Once the lakes freeze, we'll finish, we'll start and finish the observation deck and fishing pier out at Oakwood Lake Township Park on Rossman Lake. It'll be similar to the one at Powell Lake. And then in 2019, we'll put our Powell Lake Playground in, Powell Lake Pavilion, and redo the parking lot at Powell Lake. Millage, real quick update. As you know, we weren't successful last week. I want to thank everybody who supported. From the feedback that we heard, there was some confusion with the ballot language, the way it read. I know you guys took an active role to help us simplify that. I think a lot of our residents thought they were voting on the bond again or didn't know it was our actual operating millage and not just another addition to the bond. So the Commission last night spoke in length to this, and we understand that the Oakland County Sheriff's Millage is up in 2020, as is ours. And the Parks and Rec Commission asked me to share tonight with you, if this board chooses to do a special election next year in 2019 for the sheriff, that the Parks and Rec Commission would be more than happy to share that cost instead of waiting to 2020. Because I know from community leaders meetings, there are other things that are going to be coming into this community in 2020. So instead of flooding the taxpayers with multiple issues on the ballot, and keep in mind, if our millage doesn't pass in 2020, then you shut the gates at the parks and we don't have a park department. You have parks, but you have no one to run them. So. OCTV, we came up with a lease, or I should say, they drove up a lease. The Commission last night has authorized me not to sign it until the OCTV Commission, the Cable Commission has signed it, and this Township Board. So I don't know if it's better in front of you yet, but we will not sign it until you guys have seen it. And just a clarification on the snow plowing. As you recall, the Parks and Rec, we do all the snow plowing. This is the order of precedence for snow plowing for us. Oakland County Sheriff Department, the Township Hall, Seymour Lake Park, then the Safety Pass, then our remaining parks, and then the four different cemeteries. So keep in mind, we have three guys plowing, so it's not like we're going to be able to get to the school sidewalks immediately in the morning. We have to make sure the sheriff is open, and then, of course, our offices, and then we'll go from there. So if you have any questions regarding that, just be patient with us. It's going to be a learning process for us with the Safety Pass, but we'll do the best we can. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Hearing done, we'll go into our business for the evening. Board members, item seven, A, we need to have a public hearing to consider the establishment of the Special Assessment District for the eradication and control of aquatic weeds in Squaw Lake and Clear Lake.
I move to open the public hearing at seven oh eight PM to discuss the establishment of the Squaw Lake, Clear Lake Special Assessment District.
Second.
Motion by Clerk Wright, supported by Trustee Curtis, to open the public hearing. Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members. We're now in a public hearing. Anybody that would like to address the Township Board on that issue, please come to the mic and state your name for us, and address if you could.
Good evening. Dennis Corrigan, one nine nine four Lakesview. The Special Assessment, I don't know why you're trying to establish a second Special Assessment District. There already is one, which is a larger area than what you're considering now. That Special Assessment District is for the dam that controls the lake level. The only reason I see that some people are trying to circumvent that Special Assessment District is to reduce the number of people that have to sign the petition. From where I counted, one hundred and nineteen lake lots, all those people in the back part of the subdivision that aren't included in the lakefront property have complete access to that lake. They have as much access as I do. They have outlots, there are areas to go, and they should be included in that also, in the weed control. As far as the weed control goes, I don't particularly like the idea of putting chemicals into that lake. They're weed killers. And what goes into that lake stays in the lake. I don't care what the government or what the company says, those chemicals leach into the water, they leach into the lake bottom, and they leach into the weeds that aren't used, that aren't targeted by the chemicals. I used to be able to rake weeds out of the lake and put them in my garden. I can't anymore. No matter what anybody says to me, they're not going to convince me that those chemicals don't stay in the water, stay in the weeds that are already there, that are still there, and that stay in the mud that's at the bottom of the lake. So that means I can't use those weeds for fertilizer. Second of all, I didn't, I've lived on the lake for forty-two years. Moved here in nineteen seventy-six. I moved here not to be, not to live on a swimming pool. Lakes have weeds. That's the bottom line. If you don't have weeds, you don't have life in the lake. I looked out there just before I came here, and my lakefront, the bottom of the lake looks like a desert. There's nothing there. I used to sit out on my deck and watch a kingfisher dive down from the tree next door, dive down into the lake and catch fish, heron, walk up and down the lakeshore. They're gone. They're not there anymore. There's no weeds, there's no crayfish, there's no fish, there's no frogs, there's nothing. I have dead weeds now rolling up and clogging my lakeshore. As I said, I didn't move out, I didn't move to a lakefront lot to live on a swimming pool. And that's exactly what it's being turned into. If you want a Special Assessment District, and it's nothing about money, there should be more people involved. All those people that live on Keith and Hilberg and Gill and Gibson, Burlingame, Sebeck, all those people should be involved in this process. They have as much right to those lakes as I do as a lakefront property owner. And the only reason that they aren't included is to cut down the number of signatures they had to get for the petition. In fact, I wasn't even contacted to sign the petition. Maybe they knew I'd throw them off my porch. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Corrigan. Anybody else like to speak on this topic? Board members, a motion will be in order to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing at seven thirteen PM to discuss the establishment of the Squaw Lake, Clear Lake Special Assessment District.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Wright, supported by Trustee Nichols, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Board members, we're also going to need a motion to open a public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant Funds.
I move to open the public hearing at seven thirteen PM to open the two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant Funds to discuss the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, supported by Trustee Curtis, to open the public hearing to discuss two thousand, excuse me, twenty nineteen's Community Development Block Grant Funds. Roll call, vote, please.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
We're now in a public hearing on block grant funds. Any public comments? Will there be a motion to close the public hearing?
I think we'll motion that we close the public hearing at seven fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Nichols, supported by Trustee Curtis, to close the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant Funds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Board members, we're on to item eight, A, the second reading for Propose Ordinance forty-four point zero zero one, Commercial Peddlers Solicitors and Transient Merchants. Board members, any comments?
I move to adopt Ordinance forty-four point zero zero one, titled Commercial Peddlers, Solicitors, and Transient Merchants, to amend Section thirty-eight through eighty-one, titled Peddlers, of the Oxford Charter Township Code of Ordinances, and to approve the Commercial Peddlers Solicitors and Transient Merchants Registration Form required by Ordinance forty-four point zero zero one as presented.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Curtis, supported by Trustee Dur, to approve the motion, to approve the second reading and adoption of the Commercial Peddlers Solicitors and Transient Merchants Ordinance. Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members. That's passed. Board members, we're on to Fire Department Business, nine, A, Nationwide Retirement Plan Changes. Any questions? Will there be a motion in order?
I move to approve the option one, guaranteed minimum interest rate change to the Oxford Fire Department Nationwide Retirement Solutions IRS Section four five seven B Deferred Compensation Plan to be effective beginning the first quarter of two thousand and nineteen.
Second the motion.
Motion by Trustee Curtis, supported by Clerk Wright, to approve the Nationwide Retirement Plan Changes. Roll call, vote, please.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members. Item nine, B, Assistant Fire Chief Dave Creach's contract renewal. Any discussion? A motion will be in order, please. I move to approve the employment agreement between David Creach and the Charter Township of Oxford commencing January one, two thousand and nineteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, as presented. Authorize Supervisor William Dunn to sign the agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, supported by Trustee Nichols, to approve the Fire Department contract with Dave Creach, the renewal. Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Welcome aboard again, Mr. Creach. Nine, C, memorandum of agreement, wage adjustments for Oxford Firefighters Unions, IAFF Local four seven six three. Any discussion?
I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Township of Oxford and the Oxford Firefighters Union, IAFF Local four seven six three, as prevented, as presented, to modify the wages of the current collective bargaining agreement, and authorize Supervisor William Dunn and Fire Chief Pete Schultz to sign the memorandum of agreement on behalf of the Township of Oxford. This memorandum of agreement shall be effective upon signatures of Supervisor William Dunn and Fire Chief Pete Schultz.
Support.
Okay, a motion by Trustee Curtis, supported by Trustee Nichols, to adopt the memorandum of agreement. Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members. Item nine, D, recommendation to hire Richard DeVork to fill a vacant firefighter paramedic position.
I move to approve the hiring of Richard DeVork to fill the vacant firefighter paramedic position for the Oxford Fire Department to be effective November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, at a starting wage per the memorandum of agreement between the Township of Oxford and the Oxford Firefighters Union, IAFF Local forty-seven sixty-three, modifying the wages of the current collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Nichols, supported by Trustee Curtis, to hire Richard DeVork to fill the vacant firefighter paramedic position. Roll call, vote, please.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members. That motion carries. Is Richard in the audience?
He is.
Richard, congratulations, and welcome aboard. Board members, items nine, E, recommendation to promote Sarah Racer to Lieutenant EMS Coordinator. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, we're ready for motion then. Was there discussion from board?
Is it open for discussion?
Pardon?
Is it open for discussion?
Oh, yeah, coming up. Sorry, didn't hear it back there.
No, that's okay. Evening, Board. Kevin Snell, President of the Oxford Firefighters Union, IAFF Forty-seven sixty-three. I would just like to know for the record what the Fire Department and the Township Board plans to do with Lieutenant Hunger upon Sarah Racer's promotion to Lieutenant EMS Coordinator.
Chief, can you help address that for us?
Certainly, Board. At that time, when Ms. Hunger should return back to work, at that time, we will address it at that time and provide a position for her.
So there will be a position available for her?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like to make the Board aware, according to the union contract, any newly created position that doesn't include any current classification will have to be negotiated for. Terms, wages, conditions, employment will also have to be posted for thirty days, and all eligible members will be able to apply. So Lieutenant Hunger is not able to just be moved to a newly created classification without it being posted for all members to apply for. So just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Kevin. Board members, any comments?
I move to promote Sarah Racer to Lieutenant EMS Coordinator from firefighter to paramedic for the Oxford Fire Department effective November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, at a wage as determined under the Article thirteen promotions in the memorandum of agreement between the Township of Oxford, Oakland County, Michigan, and the Oxford Firefighters Union International Association of Firefighters, Local four seven six three, modifying the wages of the current collective bargaining agreement.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Wright, supported by Trustee Nichols, to appoint Sarah Racer to Lieutenant EMS Coordinator position. Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, Board members. That passes. Is Sarah in the audience?
No.
Okay. Board members, item ten, A, Squaw Lake, Clear Lake Special Assessment District Resolution Number Two. Clerk Wright?
Yes, Board members, this is a renewal of the existing SAD that's in place, it's expiring this year, and it's being proposed for a ten-year extension. This has nothing to do with the existing SAD in place for the dam repairs. So it's two separate and distinct SADs that are in place. So what this is, is a resolution to authorize the creation of the assessment role of the supervisor and bring that back for approval to set up for a public hearing, and then proceed on with the approval of the SAD.
Is there a motion?
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Maybe you might like to explain, you know, how we fit into this SAD process, so everybody understands.
Guys, with the SAD process, this is all resident-driven. It's whatever majority of the residents want. We're basically just facilitating it. And that's our function in this whole process. And this is just an extension of what was already there. I think the five-year one expires this year.
We really don't have a horse in this rodeo.
I realize that.
Okay.
But for the public hearings, the first time the Special Assessment District was set up, I was not available and couldn't be here. I realize it's resident-driven. From my calculation, they're included in what they want the Special Assessment District to contain right now are one hundred and nineteen lake lots. That means sixty signatures have to be, have to be.
Verified.
Yeah. In neither, in the first case, I was, I'm a lake lot owner, and I realize all they need is sixty. They can go down the row and get sixty signatures and call it a day, and that'll be the end of it. They don't have to contact all one hundred and nineteen lake property owners. But it seems funny to me that I wasn't contacted five years ago to sign a petition, and I wasn't contacted this time to sign a petition. I guess I wouldn't have any problem if the way that the weeds were controlled was by harvesting machine. I don't like chemicals being put into the lake. That's the bottom line. The chemicals will stay there. And everybody in that subdivision, and everybody just about in Oxford Township gets their water from a well. That lake is just an exposed aquifer. And those chemicals that are put in the lake are eventually going to get to those underground aquifers where everybody in this township gets their water, gets their drinking water It just bothers me a lot. I used to fish, there aren't any fish in the lake. The birds have vanished. The frogs have vanished. I used to get crayfish out of the weeds. There aren't any weeds, so there's no crayfish. When I raked the weeds, I raked about half of them that were in front of my property and put them on my garden. And you, I told somebody, you wouldn't believe the way the garden grew. I could get heads of cauliflower as big as your head. And I can't do it now. Haven't had a garden like that in five years because of the chemicals. There's a better way to do it. And, you know, people can rake the weeds. That lake drops off very fast, and you don't have to walk out very far to get to a drop-off. And you can rake the weeds, and you don't have a problem. As I said, I didn't buy a lot on a swimming pool. Lakes have weeds, and you just got to live with it. The cycle of the lake, and everything in nature has a cycle. I've lived on a lake for sixty of my seventy years, and the lake cycles. Some years, two or three years maybe, there may be a lot of weeds, but they die off. You don't need to poison everything around the weeds to control the weeds. You go fishing, right after you get your lawn fertilized and weed killer sprayed on it, would you go out and eat the grass? No, it's poison. And everything that lives in that lake is poisoned. The government says it's fine, those chemicals are fine, but they said the water in Flint was fine, too.
Understood, Mr. Corrigan. Thank you. Board members, how would you like to proceed?
Just a few more comments. On the SAD itself, approximately sixty-six percent signed the petition based on that. Mr. Corrigan, I do have information from the company that's going to be spraying if this goes through. If you'd like that information, I can provide that to you as well, if that's some of your
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have heard this argument, not only at this lake, but several lakes, and they've used the process on the lake where I'm at. It's done a good job, it's taken care of their issues. What you have to understand is that we, as a board, have no control over this. It's the wishes of the community. They have presented a satisfactory petition to us legally, so we're bound to go move forward with it. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, will there be a motion in order?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve Resolution Two to establish the Squaw Lake, Clear Lake Special Assessment District as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion by Trustee Nichols, supported by Clerk Wright, to approve Resolution Number Two to establish the Squaw Lake, Clear Lake Special Assessment District as presented. Roll call, vote, please.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Thank you, board members, that motion carries. We're on to new business, item 11A, 2018, 2019 EVIP Grant Funding. Board members, as you know, we receive these monies every year based on us filling out some different reporting and everything. The only thing different is there, the supplemental monies have to be allocated to our debt, paying off some type of an OPEV debt. And as you know, our biggest one outstanding is the firefighter retiree fund. That's where my recommendation is, where we allocate those funds. And there's a motion in your packet if you'd like to review that. Yes, Trustee Curtis.
Why wouldn't we put all that money into paying down that pension fund of the firefighters and the police which are no longer putting into it?
Yeah, that, that's always our call. Last couple of years, we've split it amongst all the taxing units, fire, police, general parks, rec and library. It's totally our option what we want to do with the money.
Yeah, I'd like to see it all go in there and pay down that debt that we keep paying for the police department that is no longer putting into it, no longer part of it. You know, that's a monumental amount of money they're drawing out of there and no way of catching it up unless we support it with funds and grants from outside the township taxation.
And I understand that logic, but I, at least myself, I'd like to see the amount we have to give to the pension obligations, that portion, but the other 45,000, I'd like to see that spread amongst other units. I'd like to give them a little piece of that money too.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you that it should probably be split up some degree, particularly looking at the Parks and Rec and the situation they have where they just turned down a millage. They certainly could use the money, I'm sure, at this point. And I underdo, understand where Jack has come from on this too. You'd like to pay off those, those debts that seem to be never-ending.
Budget amendments at the end of the year too.
That's true. Thank you. Keep that in mind.
Clerk Wright. The, the rationale for splitting it between the units, are, are they paying into this to get money back?
Not directly, no. Nobody's really paying into it. It's basically monies from the state that they're allocating to follow their guidelines and reporting. We've just done this as a courtesy the last two or three years and split it amongst all the units.
And the 13,808 is just the excess above.
The supplemental that we have to allocate to some type of outstanding pension or medical retiree. I'll make a motion, authorized Treasurer Joseph G. Ferrari sign a one-year subscription contract invoice with Munetrix LLC, amount of 3,567.60, in order to meet the state of Michigan reporting requirements to cert, to secure economic vitality and center program EVIP funding.
Second.
It is, oh, still going.
Still going.
It is further understood that the 3,567.60 will be subtracted from the 59,067 EVIP grant, leaving 45,259.40 to be distributed to the Oxford Township local taxing units based on 2018 millage rates, township millage rates, and 13,808 to be designated to the Oxford Township Fire Fund to help pay its outstanding pension obligations.
Boy, you did have a lot more to say, didn't you? I'll second it.
Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, supported by Trustee Nichols, roll call, vote please.
Trustee Curtis, no. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Thank you, board members, that passes. Item 11C, Electronic Payroll, Clerk Wright.
Oh, you got, oh.
Sorry, CDBG Suggested Funding for 2019.
Where'd that go? Okay.
Sorry about that.
It was back in the public hearing portion.
Yep, that's what I remembered. Okay, board members. I'd like to make a motion that the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees formally agrees to allocate its 2019 Community Development Block Grant Funds, CDBG funds, in the following manner. 27,597 for the mobile home, minor home repair program for mobile homes within Lake Villa Parkers that is administered through Oakland County CDBG. 11,826 to provide Oxford Township residents with emergency food, utility, rent, mortgage, medical and educational assistance. Emergency medical and leave it at, emergency, no, that's fine, sorry. In the case of, that CDBG funding comes in less than anticipated, the allocation for the mobile home minor home repair program is to be reduced appropriately. The Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees also authorize the CDBG Coordinator Joseph G. Ferrari to prepare all the necessary documents, authorize Supervisor William Dunn to sign the 2019 Annual CDBG Submittal, 2019 Subrecipient Agreement, when made available, in the conflict of interest certification on behalf of the township.
Second for discussion.
A motion by Treasurer Ferrari, supported by Trustee Curtis, discussion please.
The 11,826 will be monitored by the Oxford Orient Fish.
You can't say that.
Can't say that.
No. It's got to be bid out.
What do you mean it has to be bid out?
We basically put an ad in the paper, everybody gets a chance to bid on it. Historically, Fish is the only one that bids on it.
So do we bid on the mobile home and home repair?
No, that's a different program.
But it's the same money.
Understood. It's just basically federal regulations. We can't award it to anybody until we go through the bidding process. Once that process has been completed, then we can award it.
And what is the criteria for bidding?
Basically, the criteria for bidding is providing the services that an organization within the community provides.
So Fish is going to get it.
Historically, they've gotten it the last five or six years.
I'm just making sure that that's where it goes because in the motion, it's pretty open that anybody could get this money.
Correct.
Anybody could give it out to whoever.
It's up to the board to ward the bid.
I know Fish has a, a strict adherence with Love Inc. and everybody is, is top-notch on who they give what to, so I just don't want it out there willy-nilly giving it away to everybody.
Well, the board has the priority when it's bid out and if other bids come back, to ward to whoever they'd want.
We have to look at them, right.
If we receive more than one bid.
Thank you.
Like I said, historically, it's only been one bid. Okay, board members, roll call, vote please.
Uh, Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Thank you, board members. Item 11C, Electronic Payroll.
Board members, I put this on the agenda because we've had several occasions where people aren't cashing their checks within a 60-day period, causing a lot of time to go ahead and void a check and reissue a check in the, in the office. So in order, in order to alleviate that and proposing that we go to an electronic payroll system, starting in 2019 for the first payroll, so just wanted to see if that's something the board is in favor of. Treasurer Ferrari, who deals with your department, Kelly can maybe, maybe attest if she wants to make a comment on, on the issues they face when they're going through an uncashed check after 60 days.
Trustee Curtis.
Is this problem with one person?
Uh, one person has been the main culprit, but there's been up to four people at one time that haven't cashed checks that we've had to void and reissue.
I mean, I get a check. It never happens to me.
Right. But I think Curtis is trying to get to the year 2019.
Yeah, I'm trying not to do it too because I don't think it's right.
You're, back in 1953, I agree.
2018, I disagree.
And I understand where he's coming from.
There, there's two, two options. You can go direct deposit on this, you can also have what's called a debit card.
You can.
Trustee Nichols.
I just want to say that along with Jack, it's never happened to me before because I've always been electronic. Never had any issues. Works like a charm.
Myself, I enjoy that myself. Board members, will there be a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Charter of Township of Oxford require that all employees' payroll paychecks shall be paid through an electronic payroll payment system with the option of payroll direct deposit or loaded onto a payroll prepaid debit card. The electronic payroll payment system shall be effective beginning with the first payroll cycle of fiscal year 2019.
Motion by Trustee Nichols, supported by Trustee Dur, to adopt the new electronic payroll system. Roll call, vote please.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Curtis.
No.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Thank you, board members, that carries. We're on to item 12, items removed from the consent agenda fraction. There was none. Any public comment? Further public comment? You hearing none? Item 14, Board Trustee Comments. Let's start off with Trustee Curtis.
I have none.
Clerk Wright.
I have a couple. Just thank you to Treasurer Ferrari, Trustee Nichols and Trustee Curtis for their work on the solicitation ordinance. And also with every election, I'd like to thank Susan McCullough and Kelly Richter for conducting probably over 90% of the election to get it completed for me. I appreciate that. I appreciate the workers that put their time in for that day as well, so definitely appreciate it. And it was a record turnout for a midterm election, so I'm happy to see people turn out to vote. Thank you.
Trustee Dur.
Nothing.
Trustee Nichols.
As Chairman of one of the precinct, I will say dittle to that. It's kind of a nice deal that as a chairperson, if you have issues, that you can call the township offices and get the answers immediately. And if they don't have it, it only a matter of a few minutes. I'd like to also thank Deanna Cushing, Susan McCullough, Kelly Richter by all means, and above all, Curtis Wright and all the work that he did in coordinating this and getting it as successful as it was this year. A lot of people came through.
Thank you, board members, I have one comment. This came over through the Michigan Township Association. We're going to want to take a look at this coming up probably in December, January, about possibly an opt-out ordinance for recreational marijuana. Basically, it says this week voters said yes to prop 2018-1, legalizing marijuana for recreational use in Michigan. Once the proposal takes effect, 10 days after the election results are certified, which must be done by November 26, adults over 21 may use, possess and grow a certain amount of marijuana in their homes. State has a year to establish a new regulatory system at which point potential marijuana